Meeting to order, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. It actually turned out to be a nice day today. A little foggy in the AM. Hear the freighter horns going? Roll call.
John DeBoyer.
Here.
Maureen Bory.
Here.
Mark Burchard.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Here.
Chris O'Regan.
Here.
Cindy Valentine here.
Okay. Uh, bill's payable. I will entertain a motion.
Would I let them make a motion to approve bills payable in the amount of $7,210.59?
Motion support. Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. Uh, there's a plaque, $352. Do we know what the plaque's for? Kind of expensive for one plaque.
It's probably for the cemetery.
It's the cemetery fund.
Cemetery.
Cemetery fund. Alright, and then the water sample on the north channel, what are we, we sampling water for something? What was that for?
We take, John, don't we take a bunch of samples the whole time? And what are you looking at?
There's $175 for a water sample on the north channel. I didn't know if that had anything to do with our...
That's the one from the north then for the THM and HA5s.
So those are quarterly, um...
175.
Quarterly Eagle mandated water samples.
Great. Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next is the supervisor's report. Um, I'm gonna start off by saying, people, please cut your grass. I think we sent out 40 warnings, um, to, for people to cut grass, and we do not want to be in the grass cutting business. So, please cut your grass. Uh, had a very good meeting with Eagle on the, and all the engineers on the algae wastewater treatment plant. Um, everything's pretty well settled now on the design and, and equipment needed. Uh, actually, we can start looking at ordering and locking in prices on, on a lot of the equipment. Uh, some of the stuff actually has a, like a 30-week lead time, so as soon, sooner we can get that done, the better. And we're trying to get, uh, soil borings done on the lot. Now, I just received an email about two hours ago, and, um, we did inspect the property for, there's a question of, um, Indiana bats and federal mussels. And there was eight trees that were identified that could be a home for an Indiana bat. I don't know why they're not in Indiana. And, um, so we, we can't touch those trees until October 1st. I guess they, we're not supposed to cut trees down if there could be a bat in it between October 1st and March 31st. The federal, uh, mussels, I, I recall when they did the Crispin Drain Rehab back, I don't know, it was probably 10 years ago, seven, nine years ago. They actually had two divers dive the whole drain looking for mussels, and they didn't find a one. So, I was able to get that, uh, report from the U, United States Fishery and Wildlife. And they gave it to Eagle, and they actually wrote a letter that they, they don't think there would be a mussel on this property. And, uh, so, um, they're, Eagle's going, or we expect Eagle to, to issue us a no effect for this site, uh, concerning mussels. So, that's all good news. Um, and, uh, you know, we're, we're plugging away on the project. I did want to mention too, um, June 14th, uh, we have the head of, the head of the Eagle Department actually coming to Clay Township. Uh, we've been trying to get him here for some time, and so he can see firsthand some of the issues we're dealing with. And, um, so we get to take him around and, uh, uh, show, I mean, our, the big thing is they treat us the same as an inland lake. And I'm sorry, we don't have the same ecosystem as an inland lake does. And that's what I really want to impress on them, because the best management practices, they're called. Um, they're a lot more stringent here and in inland lakes. And we should be recognized as part of the Great Lakes. So, we'll see what happens. Sewer lining rehab project, um, there was a little concern, something about the cement and the diameter. And, but it was resolved rather quickly, and actually, the study was done. And the, the existing, uh, pipe is actually going to, um, have a 10% greater flow rate because the, the, the lining is slippery.
Or C factor.
Yeah, the C factor, right. So...
Coefficient factor.
Is it coefficient?
Yeah. C factor.
Uh, the Blue Bill Bridge bids came in. Total cost of the replacement is $1,157,318. After all the federal grant and county grants we got, have funded, the township responsible is $7,149. So, it's a savings of, uh, over 1.15 million. And, uh, there is a pre-construction meeting in the next couple of weeks I plan on attending. At that time, I'll get more ideas as far as the timing of it. But, uh, thank God we got those federal and state and monies to help pay for it. This is a local road, and it would fall 100% on the, um, Clay taxpayers if we didn't get that funding.
Good job. So Artie, do you know, will that be a temporary bridge, or are they gonna shut down one lane at a time?
They're gonna do one lane at a time, I'm assuming.
Like the Merrill Bridge?
Yeah. They, they, they'll do, it'll be a one lane.
Maybe a traffic light?
And I'll have traffic signals, I'm assuming, but I'll know for sure at the pre-con meeting. Senate Bill 700 was passed by the Senate, you know, it passed the subcommittee, I testified on that, passed the whole, whole, um, Senate, and it's, uh, heading to the House now. And I'm told that it should move fairly fast. I'm hoping we get this all the way through by the end of summer. And this bill will allow us to form a second DDA on Harson's Island, San Souci District. Typically municipalities are only, can only have one DDA. And we, we felt the need to, to basically change the law so we could have a second one. And, uh, also still looking at, I, I told you about how we requested, uh, funding for a Marshmaster? And it turns out the state is probably gonna buy two of them, but they're gonna retain ownership of them. And we actually had a meeting with some of the folks in Lansing and the DNR about the problems that the DNR would have if they owned it and having us use it. And, uh, so we're trying to, uh, work out some, uh, operational contract or options in, in the boilerplate of the, of the funding to still allow us to use one of these Marshmasters. Um, you know, we'll have, we'll have to wait and see what happens. Still working on union negotiations with the fire union, MAFF. Working on, working with a company that is planning on moving into the old Eckerd Plant, the old auto craft plant on Fruit Road. So, and, um, um, that's, you know, exciting, that'll bring some jobs. And, uh, also working with another company that's, uh, looking to move into the Sensation Building, just a couple of doors down. Uh, let's see. And, um, still working on a lot of the several, um, projects stemming from our ARPA Fund workshop meeting. Uh, we got stuff going out to bid and, uh, in, in preparation of all those. And I got an update on the County Beach. It's gonna be across from Catch 22. They, uh, settle, they have all the engineering done on, uh, Phase 1. And, uh, they're, they're planning on having a red, red ribbon cutting ceremony sometime in, in August. They didn't announce the date yet. And they're planning on Phase 1 being done sometime in December. And they're estimating that this is about a million dollar, uh, project for Phase 1. And, you know, the, the total investment they're talking about in this park is four and a half million. So, moving, moving along. Uh, fall cleanup weekend for, uh, the, for the fall is September 21 and 22nd. And we hit a environmental home run. This is really important to me. Sturgeons are now off the endangered, endangered species list. And you thought, is that a good thing? You know, it is a good thing because, you know, there's enough of them now to, to be removed off the, off the list. And this is a, a, a direct result of the Friends of St. Clair River, Sturgeons for Tomorrow, the GLR, Great Lakes, um, restitution, or not restitution, Rehab Initiative, GLR, which we had several grants for from that. They actually, we had two, they built a, a sturgeon reef on the middle channel, and they built one on the north channel over towards Russell Island. And, um, um, and, and it's, it's, it's working great. And I, it's just, uh, a, a great example of public-private partnerships for, to come up with a good result. So I think that's a, a home run. And now, I, I'm sure you, you remember, the north channel is the sturgeon capital of the Great, angling capital of the Great Lakes. There are more sturgeons caught on this, on the north channel than put, all the other Great Lakes put together. Last week, we opened up the outdoor classroom at Agawen Nature Trail over by the Agawen Elementary School. It was well-attended and, and, uh, the students did a bio blitz. They were in there working along with the DNR and Friends of St. Clair River, and that was a, a really good event. And if you remember our friend LJ that had, suffering from Angelman's Syndrome, that came here and we passed a resolution and, and we sent it on to the state, and he got big traction there. They went to the Capitol for the day. Uh, at this event, he was actually, Senator Hertel came, and they actually presented them with the resolutions and the, and the, um, uh, documents that where the state of Michigan now recognizes, I think it's February 14th, whatever the date was, as Angelman Syndrome Awareness Day. And, uh, they were there, and it, it was, it was a good, it was great to see. So that all stemmed from us here. Uh, let's see. Just doing a lot of research, I'm sorry. Just doing a lot of research, uh, on frag mighties. And, uh, they, they found that, uh, they're using wild rice is holding back frag, frag mighties. And I'm actually gonna be involved in a, um, a webinar on this Thursday. And we see sections actually on the Crispin Drain, on the trail there that we did, where the wild rice is actually holding all the, the frags back. So they're gonna be doing a couple of test areas with them. One of the challenges is we're working on, uh, finding a good seed source for, for this wild rice, and they're working on that right now. So potentially that will, I mean, it'll be, take a couple of years to figure out and everything. Hey, Music in the Park lineup is done, starting this, uh, next Thursday. Sorry. In Elgin Act, and we do have four dates, uh, for concerts on, at Brownsfield and Harson's Island. One of the great, uh, events that I like, Boats, Boats for Vets is June 15th, where any vet can go and give, we take, they, they get a free boat ride for the day and take them all around. They go back to the VFW afterwards, and they get a great lunch, and they get, uh, prizes and gifts that they can win. Usually we get about, sorry, 30-plus, um, boats that volunteer for the rides. And, um, uh, we usually get about 120 vets for the event. And I put it out there, I think we're a little shy on vets. If, uh, you know any vets that would like to participate. Get ahold of Forest Walker, or get ahold of me, and I'll put you in contact with them. And kudos to our Elgin Act men's baseball team who won districts, and to the Elgin Act women's softball team who also won district. And I hear we have some members of our track team going to states, uh, for competition too. That's all I got.
Supervisor Bryson, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
Oh, I forgot.
Uh, to add 1G resolution, 2413 Conveyance of Bottomlands, and 1H, uh, Discussion for the Community Garden.
Support. Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I'm opposed.
You're opposed?
Yeah.
Okay, let the record show that. Alright, so 1G is, uh, Conveyance of Bottomlands, 1H is Discussion of a Community Garden. Uh, public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Good evening, everyone. Christine Holcomb, Harson's Island, here on behalf of SS Downtown, Inc. Just, I know that you have the proposed welcome sign on your agenda tonight, and unfortunately Cindy Pilato, who was our treasurer, was working with Phillips on the final design. She couldn't be here tonight, so, um, I just think they did a fantastic job with the redesign of the Option B, which is what we really hope will be the sign. I understand that location will yet be determined. There appears to be some underlying issues that haven't been resolved, but at least, um, the sign may be on its way. Um, I also wanted to remind everybody, this coming Saturday, we're gonna have our first road rally. We have about 15 to 16 teams signed up, about 70 people. Uh, we're still accepting registrations. You can find the information on the SS Downtown, Inc. website, or Facebook, or Instagram. It's, it's out there. There's also, if you're on the island, there's also registration forms available at the grind and, I believe, at the bar.
How many people you need to register?
We prefer there's three people to a team, but we're accepting free agents and can form a team there. And we are, also are offering a buffet breakfast, and that'll be at, uh, 8:45. We expect the shotgun start for the race at 9:20. And we hope to be done ending at Brownsfield by noon, so everybody can get out on the water, enjoy, enjoy the summer on the boat, so. If anybody's interested, there's still time. We'd love to have you come. Thank you all.
Thanks.
So that does start at San Souci then, at 9:20? Okay.
Any other public comments? Okay. Moving right along, the consent agenda. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve, excuse me, the consent agenda, the minutes of May 20th, 2024, and board approved an in-between meeting checklist.
Support.
Hey, motion of support. Any discussion?
You know, the, um, epoxy, $14,000.
For the police.
Yeah. Is that, is that part of the, uh...
That'd be part of their renovations that we approved from the ARPA.
Right.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Yep.
From the COVID money. I have a couple of questions. Um, the $1,600, $80 for Champion's Auto Ferry, does that include, um, passes for the people who came to the island meeting?
What are you referring to, Maureen?
Did you pay for the board?
The board approved bills from last meeting?
The board to pay?
I don't, I don't have any information from, we approved that last meeting, so I don't have that information with me this meeting.
So no one knows if you gave ferry tickets to the people on this board to come across the island?
I don't know.
Nobody knows?
I don't have that information, no.
Does anybody want to say if they got a ticket?
What, what was that?
Did you, did you receive a ticket to go across the island?
What, from here?
Right, from the board. You did.
They're, they're entitled to. They're going to a function for the township, yes.
Well, I'm coming to a function every single meeting, and I do not get a ticket, and I live on the island, so this was my question before.
Because you don't pay for a ticket to come this way.
Well, I have to get home.
I understand.
Oh, so, okay.
That, that's an IRS legislative rule. That's not a board rule.
We're not talk, we're talking about the bills here.
Alright, well, that's $1,680 about the bills, and I wanted to know if it included that, so obviously it does.
If that's the case, I'd like to get reimbursed for gas.
Yeah.
Alright, and, um, the Seaburton Deloski attorney fees for 2,000, what was that, what was that for?
Was that also on the board that we approved last board meeting?
I think that was on the, no, yes, that was on that one.
So we don't have any information. We had all the information last board meeting when we approved those bills.
Alright, I'll go to the in-between meetings then. Um, there's a lot of premiums, like AFLAC for 762. You collect that from the people. People always ask me that, because they see it on here. But you collect that from the employees, and then we just pay it, right? So we're not paying that. I see we bought $150 worth of clothing for Babish.
What clothing did she need? Was that her full yearly amount?
Yes.
And, uh...
She turned in receipts for it. It's part of the union contract.
A certain event, okay. And the dental premiums for almost $5,700, is that every month?
Yes.
The Delta Dental. Does it always the same every month?
No.
Alright, so this includes deductibles and things, just like the healthcare did?
No.
So why is it different every month?
Because people that are either on it are increasing it, or people that are leaving are decreasing it.
Okay. And the Playscape Spark Grant for $38,000 that we paid PCE, that is coming out of the grant, right?
Yes.
Okay.
But that is not $38,000 for the Spark Grant? That is a combination of all the invoices that PCE bills us throughout the month for all the projects the board has approved?
Well, it's all combined on a Playscape Spark Grant.
Well, it's all combined, because that's the beginning of the description of the list of things. It can only fit so much on here.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Okay. Any more discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Next, Nickel Saff General Liability Property Auto Insurance for $110,808. It show, it is, is an increase of 6% in the rate, uh, and another 3% increase, increase of exposure, just because our values have increased. If that makes sense, so. We're at 110,000, or, yeah, 110,000. I can remember back in, oh, like...
16?
2014. We were about 130,000, if I remember. So, uh, I know it's an increase from last year, but I, I still think we're doing incredibly well with our liability insurance. So, I will, I will just throw that tidbit out there. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Nickel and Saff General Liability Property and Auto Insurance in the amount of $110,000, $110,806.
Support. Okay, we have motion and lots of support. Any more discussion?
Well, it's 3.8% exposure increase, so really we're looking at a 10%, almost 9.8% increase.
Total.
On this insurance.
Yep.
Have we gotten any other bids? I mean, I know, like, I'll shop for my insurance every year if it goes up over 5%, so...
Our, our agent shops many carriers and comes back with the best.
So we don't have any comparables to look at?
They, they have done a lot more.
I mean, how many?
The agent, I don't, they, they put, they put all the information and they send it to different companies. And it doesn't matter what agent you give, they're gonna give you back the same quotes. And this is the most competitive quote that, um, we received. And like I said, I think we're doing extraordinary well, uh, considering where we were 10 years ago.
It's just up $10,000, and you know, I, I don't know how many people, I have to take your word for it, I guess, that they shopped around and there's more than one quarter.
I'm very familiar with commercial property insurance, and believe me, it has gone up.
So this is a good deal?
I feel the pain myself, but it's, it's what it is.
Okay.
Yeah, replacement values. How, how much does it cost more today to replace things? 8% inflation, 10%?
Well, I know, but there's, you know, there's a lot on here other than just replacing.
And essentially, Travelers came back as the low bid.
Yes.
Nickel and Saff has been a staple, I said Nickel and Saff has been a staple in that McComb County, Mount Clemens area for a lot of years. And one of the advantages of going with Nickel and Saff is they're what they call an independent agency. So they have licenses to write for multiple carriers. Like if you go to, I don't know, pick like a State Farm, for example. State Farm can shop you with State Farm only. That's it. That's all they can offer you. Whereas an independent has the opportunity to offer you all kinds of different things.
Okay.
So knowing just a little bit about insurance, Travelers is one of the, um, the premier carriers for, for our commercial liability. They, they, they're a well-established organization. They insure people, you know, 100 times larger than, than our municipality. And they do it well. They do a, a good job with it. So, I don't know if it's any consolation, but, but the vetting process through Nickel and Saff, you know, and I, I didn't, I didn't physically see it happen, but I know what happens behind the curtain. And, and they're very reputable, and Travelers was one of the best.
Okay.
So... If you recall, a couple of years ago, we went with Burnman Flowers, their guy. And he, he was horrible, and we ended up firing him. And the agent was the exact same name, John Johnson, remember? It was hard to keep him track.
Because I know we do use it, so it's important.
Yep.
Okay, great. We do have quite a few claims.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, next we have a resolution for sewer rates for 24, 25. And this has been going along with our, um, our rate study that our, uh, accountants provide with us. And, uh, for our sewer, it's been 5% per year increase. And that's what this resolution shows.
Make a motion to approve Resolution 24-12. Actually, I think it's supposed to be 13, isn't it? Or is it 12?
So, that's interesting, right? It's Resolution 2024-12, and underneath it says Resolution 2023-17.
That must have been the last resolution.
We just gotta clean that up now.
Yeah, so it's 12.
Is it 12?
Yep.
And we'll just clean up the resolution in bold?
24, cross that.
Does that sewer rates?
Support.
Yeah, motion of support. Any discussion?
Have we taken any action at all anywhere on reducing anything with, with the sewer? I know we're getting a lot of infrastructure put in place, but...
Well, i-if we keep this pace, and that's what, I mean, we went 30 years, Kristi, forward with, with the cash flows, projections, our cap, our, our estimated capital, uh, expenses. And with, if we keep on this rate structure, um, like for all the sewer work we're doing, we won't have to bond out for it, which is huge. We won't have to have a sewer debt charge, which is huge.
So we won't have to bond out for our sewer project?
Well, it's gonna be close. Eventually, we, we, we may, or it might, may just be installment program. It, it's gonna depend on, actually, this, this one that we're doing currently... It's going to depend on, actually, this one that we're doing currently, no, we won't have to bond out.
And how much is the scope of that project?
The total cost is 2.16 million, where we received a million dollar grant for it. And because it's all in clay, but I say, hey, IRA Township, half the fluids is from IRA, I said fluids, not the other word. And, so they are actually paying for half the costs. So our responsibility for this will be 600,000.
On a 2.1 million dollar project?
Yeah, 2.1 million dollar project, costing us 600 grand.
Does anyone support that? Did anyone support that? You did?
Yep.
So does this have anything to do with the new South Water Municipal Authority?
Nope.
And no money is going toward that?
Nope.
From this, okay?
Nope. These are enterprise funds, water, sewer, police, fire, what's collected can only be spent on those things.
Well, the South Water Municipal Authority is for sewer, so.
Yes, but this money can only go towards that. Now, we do pay out of our sewer department a capital expense to South Water, which is 87,000 a year for our share.
And that's, you know, I don't know if y'all saw the email I sent, but I'd kind of like to see monthly reports from South Water, since it's such a newly formed entity, on the capacity, the dollars, I mean, I could look up my email, the five-year plan, if we looked at it, the new hookups, the money that Algonak is paying for their violations and how much they're violating. I mean, I think that people want to know that. So, I don't know if anyone else on the board feels like I do, that you'd like to see, Artie's the chair of it, he should be able to bring us maybe some information?
I chair the meetings, yeah.
So.
Are the meetings public?
Yes.
Can anybody attend?
Anybody can attend.
As a courtesy, we do list the agenda and the minutes on our website for anyone to look at.
Right, so the board's fine with not hearing anything about it or getting a report? I mean, I guess I'll go and I'll give the report then. The other question I had was, in the resolution, it doesn't mention anywhere that it's up to 20,000 gallons. And we're going to keep that in there. It says the sewer minimum rate charge use fees per 1,000 gallons will go to 78.54, which it was 74.80, but it doesn't say for up to 20,000 gallons, which is what it says on the bills. So, I, I'm not comfortable with the resolution unless we add that in there. Can we, is that, can we be in agreement for that? That way it's apples to apples?
Oh, you're confusing the resolution with the ordinance. The ordinance covers that wording.
Well, no, it says right on the bills that it goes up to 20,000 gallons.
The ordinance covers the minimum, but this is a resolution based on the quarterly charge and the per thousand gallon charge.
It says the sewer minimum rate charges use fees per 1,000 gallons for each billing cycle will be as follows.
No, not what it says.
It's right here, it says therefore.
Sewer minimum rate charge will be 78.54 per quarter.
Right here it says, do you see that part?
I'm reading it to you right now. And then, the sewer use fee of $4.05 per thousand gallons.
It says right here, up to per thousand gallons.
Great.
And sewer, and on the bills, right here, it says 20,000 gallons.
20,000 is the minimum? If you use 20,000 gallons or less, that's what you get billed for, the 78.54 per quarter. You'll never get a bill less than that.
But it doesn't say that here.
If you go over 20,000 gallons?
Right.
You will pay $4.05 for every thousand that you go over.
Right, which is up from 386, but.
Correct.
Can't we just say that the 78.54 includes up to 20,000 gallons? Because it doesn't say that.
But that's what I said in the, if you read the actual ordinance, the sewer ordinance, it goes into detail and explains all of that. This is just the resolution to adjust the rates.
Well, I see in the resolution, and I'll read it again, therefore be it resolved that the sewer minimum rate charges and sewer use fees per 1,000 gallons for each billing cycle will be provided.
Well, you're missing the as follows, as provided under Section E, Paragraph 1, which is in our ordinance. That's what John's trying to say.
Well, why does it say per thousand gallons and why doesn't it say 20,000 gallons?
Because it is per thousand, it's 4.05 per thousand gallons, Maureen.
That's over the 20,000.
There's a base charge, the minimum rate is the base charge, which is 78.54, and then there's a usage if you go over 20,000, and that is 4.05 per 1,000 gallons.
I see that, 4.05 per 1,000 gallons, but I also see at the top, the 78.54 has per 1,000 gallons next to it. So, and I mean, I don't know, I don't have the ordinance to look at.
It says sewer minimum rate charges and sewer use fees. So the sewer minimum rate charge is 78.54 and the sewer use fees are 4.05 per 1,000. The per 1,000 is just the use fee.
Well, we're not, we're not charging.
And the rest is covered in the ordinance.
All right, well, I just hope that I would be more comfortable if it said 20,000 gallons, that's all.
We can't pass resolutions to change our ordinance.
So nothing's changing the dollar amounts that are currently in there. There's no, there's no change to the quantities.
I don't see 20,000 gallons in there, it makes me uncomfortable, so I guess I should have brought the ordinance book with me or something, so. And I don't, I see on the bills, I don't have sewer on Harson's Island, so, but I got this from a concerned person. There is a SU, sewer usage, but it's never, the code's never there, so.
Because it's not being charged.
Yeah, because they must not be going over, right?
Correct. You only get sewer usage if you're over 20,000.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonen.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
No.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have a fire mini pumper. And we had four quotes.
That's true.
And we're planning on using a portion of our ARPA money to make this purchase, amount of 305,000 of ARPA funds, and the remainder will come out of our 24, 25 fire budget. And Chief, you want to come up and give us what you recommend and see if the board has any questions?
Good evening. This will be replacing the mini pumper we have on the island, which is a 1995. So it's 29 years old. It doesn't meet our needs anymore. I said, we have other needs, I should say, that would call to purchase a new vehicle. I'm requesting permission from the Township Board to purchase a new 2025 mini pumper. This is for the island station, that'll replace the 1995 one that we have now. By purchasing this, it'll allow us to access areas that we cannot access before with a larger truck. Some of the smaller bridges and to gain access to some of the outer islands that we have on the island. The new truck will be carrying more equipment and hose. The vehicle will be a 1,500 GPM pump, similar to the ones that we carry on our larger trucks. It'll also carry 300 gallons of water, and it depends on which truck we decide to go with. A minimum is 15 gallons of foam. There's one in here, in the quotes, that holds 25 gallons of foam. And that's through Darley. And more compartment space to carry additional equipment. It'll meet NFPA standard 1901 and 1906 specifications, which are required for building a fire truck.
To be clear, you're recommending the axes and irons in your pumper, right?
Right. The two quotes that I got from Artie are the same company, it's an HME. And they're two separate companies that sell the same truck. So I do have the, the specs are the same on that one. I did get quotes from E1, they were 399,000. And I also got one from Darley, which was 495,000.
Really expensive.
That one has a CAD system on it, which is a foam system. So if we didn't get it with a foam system on it, that would cut probably about 30,000 to 40,000 dollars off that price. The axes and iron is 364, and that come with some options on it that the other trucks did not. It's basically kind of set up, would be set up like our engines that we have now, with some of the fold-out, pull-out shelves, pull-out racks in the back, and a swing-out board, and also some light fixtures in it, or some light receptacle, so we can plug in our, to charge our suction machines and our equipment that we need, our batteries and whatnot for the equipment. Axes and irons are built here in Michigan, in Coopersville, Michigan. They've been around for a few years. And then there's one from, the other company is HME, they're out of Wyoming, Michigan, they're built here also.
Did you cover the Dingus fire?
Dingus, Dingus, that one is an HME, that's.
Oh, that's the two, they're together?
Yeah, those are the two that are together.
They can get that ready by November 24th?
Well, they have some that are ready by November 24th. Or November 1st through the 10th, they may have those completed.
So, on the ARPA funds, can we stretch that out?
Yeah, it just has to be committed. The funds just have to be committed.
How soon can you sell the other one?
Well, we probably wouldn't want to sell that one until we get the original one, because we do need that for, and there is a company that we sold our older trucks previously. They're out of Lansing. Once we get, I get permission from the board to sell it, then I could have them list it.
So what is your preference?
I like the Axe and Iron Company. I went to that company back in the fall and had a tour of their company. They'll come right out to our station if any warranty work needs to be done.
How long is the warranty?
It depends on what you're looking at. Now, the drivetrain, all of them are pretty much the same, they're all Ford 550 chassis. They're the only company that basically makes the chassis for mini pumppers. Those are like a three-year, 100,000 mile warranty. And then depending on the box, it can be anywhere between five years to 10 years.
What were you saying about the foam? Darley only is the only one that?
Darley has the foam, because that's got a CAD system on it, that's 25 gallons of foam that that carries. The other ones carry 15.
But you can, 15, you can work with it?
Right, we can work with that. We can also put a ductor on the ground and use it to, if we need foam off of it. But we have our other trucks too that carry the foam too, if we need.
A lot of that, yeah. What kind of foam is it?
It's F500 foam that we use.
No PFOS.
No PFOS.
No triple F?
No, no.
So what is our, Chief, what is our plan for supplementing the difference between the quote for 364,000 and the reserve funds for 305,000 from ARPA?
We are looking at next year's 24, 25 budget.
Did you work that in?
Yeah, well, it'll be part of the next year's budget.
Do we know that?
Yeah, well, not until you pass it.
That's what I'm saying.
You've been working on it, you can work it in?
Don't we have a budget meeting coming up?
Yep.
June 13th, right? 2 o'clock?
I believe so.
Kristi sent me an invite.
So we're looking at, out of the proposed 24, 25 budget, $60,000 in addition to the ARPA funds?
Yep.
59 and some change. But that's something that, I mean.
I rounded it up, thank you.
30 years, the other one's 30 years old, so if it lasts, this one can last that long.
The other thing too, this truck will also save the wear and tear on the engine that's over there, because we could use this truck to fight house fires, as we can with the large one. We bring the large one to the big fires and we can use this mini pumper for
Smaller.
Smaller ones.
Right, right.
Not saying it couldn't handle a big fire, but, yeah, accidents and.
Sounds good.
It could take a lot of trips around the island to do 100,000 miles.
Yes, it would.
For the warranty.
Are we, don't know if we're just going to have the one budget meeting, if we're going to have two, or?
We'll see how it goes, if needed.
Are we going to take that meeting? Because people have been asking me.
Well, we're talking about this right now.
All right, well.
Would we be smart to maybe do this after our budget meeting?
It's up to the board.
I mean, do we know that we're going to have 60 grand available?
Well, he's got money in fund balance. He's looking at 488 grand in fund balance, so. So we're buying the fire truck without having to borrow any money.
Yes, I understand that.
And that's what they told you to use the COVID funds for, right? Something bigger and substantial that we wouldn't normally buy, so. Okay.
For the benefits of the community.
All right. Well, I'll make the motion to approve the mini pumper purchase of 364,208.73 with a delivery of 90 to 390 calendar days, using 305,000 in ARPA funds, and finding the remainder in the 24, 25 budget.
No support.
Okay, have motion and support. Any more discussion?
I would feel more comfortable if we did this after the budget was set and we knew the money was there for it. That's just my opinion.
So Chief, is this 364,208 the amount of the truck that's going to roll off the line in November? Or is this just the amount that we've ordered?
Accident and irons truck won't be, they'll get the chassis sometime in February or March of next year. So we're not looking at getting that truck probably not until the end of April, first part of May.
Of next year.
Of next year.
But according to the contract.
Weren't they the company that said that they had two of them coming off the line in November?
No, that's HME, yep.
But according to the contract, after signed, we're going to buy it whether we have the money or not. That's what I read.
Well, we're committing to buy it.
Well, that's committing.
So it says 90 to 390 calendar days, which is three to six months, but we won't get it till April? Is that what I'm understanding?
That's when the new model change comes out. Ford builds so many chassis every year, and we kind of miss that cutoff. Now, there are some companies that do have those chassis where we can, we can get one. If you want to buy it right away, we could, we can get it in November. But if you want a newer model, pushes it back a little further.
Yeah, it's another 9,000 to get it in November, right?
Actually, that one's cheaper if you wait until April of next year. Because this one's 364, and I believe the other two trucks, one was 398, and then if you wait until November, that's 365. It would be on the HME mini pumper, it would be on the top of the.
I guess I'm confused because it says Dingus, November 24, 375, but you're saying it would be 365 in November?
The Axe and Iron is 364.
We're not talking about being in a hurry to get it until next spring, then I don't see why we wouldn't wait and talk about it a little bit more in depth at a budget workshop.
We have a budget meeting in 10 days, that's my only question.
Well, it's the 60 grand that's, right, it's not the truck that comes into play. Everybody can agree on the truck, I feel.
Right.
It's the 60 grand and how that gets funded, right? We just, we need to make that solu, is there any? Do we jeopard, do you jeopardize losing that pri- Do we jeopard, do you jeopardize losing that price point if we wait 10 days?
I don't believe so. I could talk to the gentleman that I've been dealing with and just tell him that we do have a budget workshop. I mean, they've kind of been working with us up to now.
You can tell them, you know, we're going to buy the truck, we just got to figure out how to fund it.
Right.
60 grand, you know, 20% of it.
Right.
That's all. So then what, what would, like, just humor me, what would our process be during budget meetings, like, it comes down to this topic, this agenda, right? We figure out the 60 grand. Let's say we find it either in whatever, the equipment, capital improvements, or out of his general-
Fund balance.
Fun balance, rather, I'm sorry. His fund balance.
We could maybe vote on him ordering it right then.
So, okay. Okay, so that's, that's a distinct possibility.
Yep.
Once we know what pool the 60 is coming from, we could actually call to a vote that day.
Mm-hmm.
Well, if he's got 480,000 in his fund balance, I mean, we've got it.
Yep.
We want to revisit it and deal with that again? I mean, I, I'm comfortable with going forward today.
Do we have a motion yet?
It's up to you.
We do have motion and support.
Okay. Who made the motion?
Maureen.
Okay.
And Mark supported it.
Well, I'll call the motion, and it fails, and we can postpone it to the budget shop. Does that sound reasonable?
Yeah, let's vote on it.
Roll call.
Artie Bryson.
No, I'm going to say, I'm going to say no. Let's delay it.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Two weeks.
No.
Krista Regan.
No, I prefer the 13th.
No for the 13th, or no, you wanted it?
I prefer the 13th.
Okay, no. Cindy Valentine, no. John DeBoyer?
No.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Okay, motion fails. Someone want to make a motion to postpone it till our budget workshop meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the, I'm sorry.
Postpone.
To postpone the mini pumper purchase to our June 13 budget workshop, which starts at 2:00 PM.
Yep.
Support.
Okay, motion and support. Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Do I seem to approve?
You originally said you opposed, then you said to postpone.
To postpone, thank you.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Krista Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes, okay, we're going to postpone it till our budget shop meeting. Thank you, George. Thanks for getting all those quotes together. All right, next we have Phillips sign for downtown Sans Souci welcome sign, and we've been working with SS Downtown, Inc. Did I say it right? All right. We're learning. And I believe we wanted the orange sign.
Option B.
Option B. As, I'm in black and white.
See color on the copy?
Yeah.
There we go.
Option B looks like a sunset.
Yes.
That's more like our-
That's like our, our logos too. And we have a price of 11,102 and 52 cents, and the location will be, to be determined here in the next couple of weeks. I would guess we could probably come up with a spot. And this is coming out of our ARPA money.
I'll make a motion to approve the Phillips sign for downtown Sans Souci for 11,102 and 52 cents. Option B.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Option B.
Was that you, John?
Lots of support, huh?
Was that you? Support, okay.
Who supported? John? And we will determine the location at a soon to be later date.
So as I understand it, I think Sans Souci Downtown was going to, wanted to pay for half of the sign so we wouldn't have to use so much of the ARPA funds. But I think that, I talked to them, I know there's a concern, because they were told it would be basically downtown in the main drag. You said you talked to Wisehore or something about, about it, but now maybe it would go elsewhere. By, yeah, like where the fire department is, or where?
We don't know yet.
Well, I, I mean, I would think we should postpone this one until we find out where the location is, because-
Well, that won't matter as far as the price and ordering the sign.
Well, it'll matter on the money, because they might not want to pay for it if, because they were told it was going to go in that position, they might not want to pay for it, so it is going to make difference in the money.
There's not going to be a difference in price unless we put it 20 feet up in the air or something along those lines.
There's going to be a difference in price if they pay half or they don't. Right? It's, it's 11,000 dollars?
Yeah.
If they pay half, it's going to cost the township 5,500, $50. If they don't pay half, it's going to cost the township 11,000.
We're going to pay for it. We're going to pay for it now, and once they raise the fund, they're going to reimburse us.
Is there a problem with waiting to see where the location is?
We want to get it up.
Well, we'll get it up when we know where the location's going to be, and then-
We have motion and support, so we can take a board vote whether we want to pay for it now or wait.
Right. We're just saying we're going to order, order the sign, and we'll figure out where we're going to put it in the next couple of weeks.
Do you guys have a concern with the sign?
We don't have a concern with, Christine and I, on behalf of SSD, I do not have concern with option B, correct?
Correct.
We're fine with that. We also have had discussions, Cindy is the one who spun the lead on this, correct? As far as location and the percentage that we're willing to pay, I would think we could come to a mutual agreeable spot to make this happen. If it doesn't occur in a mutual agreeable spot, then we should have further discussion about the cost factor of what we paid for. Does that make sense to everybody?
That's what I was explaining, is that, you know, we had commitment for them to pay half, but if it's going to go in a funny spot, then they don't want to pay half, and, you know, it costs the township another 5,000 dollars. So why can't we order it? I mean, we haven't had a sign for how many years? Does it hurt to wait two more weeks till the next board meeting or the budget meeting to vote on it when we know location?
How long does it take to get the sign made?
It takes, well, I know we ordered our other one month ago, month and a half ago.
I think, what did the last one take, 10 weeks?
Yeah, it's 10, 12 weeks.
I think it depends on that, like, how much material is sitting on to you.
Yeah.
I don't know, I'd rather, I'd rather have the sign in hand and then determine where we're going to put it. Because it may look different when we get it, and then we say, oh, it's going to look good here, or look there, and so defining a place to install the sign.
I mean, it's hard to install it.
So let's just get the sign and put it in later.
Is there, is there anybody that thinks there's going to be an issue coming to an agreement on location?
Yes.
On the location line?
Yeah.
I think we've been working well together, and it's obviously been doing work well together.
I just thought I was missing something.
I was told by your daughter that the location in front of-
I can say this right now, because I came into this because I'm pitch hitting, I already talked to Artie about this. We do not want the location in front of ANZ, definitely no on that one. The fire department location in the area is very busy, we prefer not to do that. What we propose in our ideal location would be, and I'm not sure how familiar everybody is with that area there, is you are coming into Sans Souci as soon as you get off of 154, there is a willow tree right by the first house, and that's, I believe Wisehore, Mr. Wisehore's property. That was where we thought would be the most ideal location. And I believe, my understanding, talking with Artie today, is that's where we're going to try to head for.
Mm-hmm.
It is wet, but I don't believe there's other difficulties other than the wetness. So that would be on behalf of SSD, the location we would want.
Right.
If this board has a problem with that, you probably should speak your piece now and see where we go, but.
No. I mean, I haven't had a chance to get my boots on and walk back there, that's all.
I just-
Ultimately, you want a sign. Sooner or later, we need to find a location that's suitable, and even if it's one that none of us likes, if that's the only place it's going to go, it may end up there. We're hoping to find-
I think we can, with cooperation of the landowners, find within a few feet location where we need to be happy for all.
Chris? I would think so. Yeah, the concern was on the other side, was the proposed option, just nothing definite. The fire department sign is there, then the lion's sign is there, and it would have placed our sign behind it, so.
Yeah, what I'm saying.
It's just too much in one spot, and I think it would detract after all this, all the work, and it's beautiful.
Right.
You know, we would like it to be seen, and-
Correct.
You know, not kind of put off on an angle in a corner where, don't put baby in the corner after all this.
I guess my point is ultimately, we would probably be just as disappointed as you.
Right.
But we're going to have to find somewhere to put it, but-
I think in, like, you know, like Kathy said, I think up to now, we've worked together really well, and you allowed us to work with Phillips, and basically, you know-
Excuse me.
Are now going to vote on it, and I think it's, it's a beautiful sign. I think it's, it's what we were hoping for, and now the only option is where. And I think if we've done this this far, that we should be able to come up with someplace that'll work. I mean, we're not engineers, we don't know where things can go, I mean, the property was offered to us, and it is a good spot for viewing, but, you know, we'll-
We definitely know not the ANZ. We definitely want to stay away from the fire department because of the congestion of all the other signs.
I agree.
And our thought was, that's really, before the fire department is really what we're considering, the start of town.
Before the fire department, the post office, this is where downtown is starting, because that's your post office. The lion's is right there, so the logical placement of the welcome to Sans Souci sign would be before those items.
Probably going to be in that section that Wisehore has, I mean, there's some frags and everything.
Right there where the optional stop sign is?
Yeah.
I don't know.
But I mean, that, that corner area, the start of downtown.
Yeah.
Cindy, when you come off of 154, you do, now that optional stop sign, coming down 154, there's, I think it's Green Street is to the right.
Yes.
It's just past there.
Just past that.
And then Mr. Wisehore, I believe, is the owner of that property, and he has, but spoken, spoken with us, and I believe he's in agreement, we just have to work all the changes.
Yeah, I've talked to him too, he goes, whatever you need.
Well, we got motion and support, let's see what happens.
It's an optional blinker, I guess, because you're supposed to turn the blinker on even though you're going straight.
I do, there's a lot of optional things going on there.
All right, all right, I mean, she just-
All right, we have motion and support.
Sans Souci told me you had concerns, so I brought them up as, as requested.
The more things have occurred, and I appreciate your concern and voice note.
I mean, it will cost the township 5,000 dollars more if we can't come up with a good spot, and we don't have Wisehore's approval, but whatever, you know, if you're okay with it, I'm okay with it.
We do have Wisehore's approval. Okay, we have motion and support. Roll call, please.
Kristi Hiltonan. Yes. Krista Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Maureen Bory?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes. Motion carries. All right, next we have the Elginac Clay Historical Society update. Is there anyone? I don't see anyone here from them. They did send us a thank you letter for the $3,000 donation, which was nice.
It was a thank you and an update letter.
Oh, you want to read it?
No.
Someone want to read it?
Yeah, give it to me.
My, my voice is afraid.
So it's addressed from April 22nd, Township of Clay, to Artie Bryson. Dear Artie and council members, regarding the $3,000 donation. We appreciate your generous donation of $3,000, and wanted to say thank you, that's in caps, for your continued support, thinking about our museums and log cabin. We do maintain our community museum, Maritime Museum, Log Cabin, Annex and River Camera. Preserving our rich history is so important for future generations. The River Camera is viewed by people all over the world. What a great way to advertise our beautiful St. Clair River. In 2023, the Maritime Museum had the Mansard replaced, and the crumbling bricks at the base of the building were replaced slash repaired, and outside lighting updated. Our plans for 2024 include replacing the carpet in our meeting room at the Maritime Museum, which is used by other local organizations, Elginac High School class reunions, period. We would welcome one of your board meetings in our meeting room. We do open business, I'm sorry, we do open the museums by special request throughout the year. Once again, thank you. Sincerely, Marilyn Genau, corresponding secretary. From the Elginac Clay Township Historical Society.
If anybody has not been in this museum, it is both of them across the street. Back in the day when I was a kid, it was a library there. They're both phenomenal, and they've done an excellent job. Probably had about, what, eight or nine Chris Craft boats inside there, and, and tons of memorabilia from Garwood. I mean, it's phenomenal. It's one of my, yeah, definitely, so. I'd love to have a meeting there, truthfully, but I don't know if we can or not, but-
And they're so accommodating to, you know, on off hours to have people come in.
Yeah, I've worked the museum myself several times, and, and I remember one time I was supposed to leave it open to the floor, and I got involved looking at stuff. I looked at my corner six, kept it open too long, so. All right, well, thank you on that, and I'm glad the money's going to well, well use. EMT Provider Acknowledgement, George? Or EMS, I'm sorry.
Yes, back in April of this year, on the 20th, Justin Higgins was at a training course at, training class at Oakland Community College for live burns. One of his, one of the students had gone down, one of his classmates dropped and had some heart issues. Didn't have a pulse. Some of the other classmates, and Justin kicked into action, started doing CPR on him until the Auburn Fire Department arrived, and the guy's alive today. So he was awarded a pen, a pen, life-saving pen, and a combination.
That's great.
I hope they spelled his name right on his accommodation that he got personally, because they spelled his name wrong on here.
I know you can't say whole lot, but he was involved in another save too. Wasn't he or somebody else?
Hmm, you're talking about the one on Blue Bell?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that was some other one.
Okay, that was somebody else, okay. All right.
It looks like they're going to-
Two good saves in a short period of time from personnel of our department, which is very nice.
We had a CPR save on, on Blue Bell.
Yeah.
Very nice to hear.
Yeah.
So they're going to recognize him on May 23rd next year?
No, this year.
Is he able to go?
He's already been recognized. I brought, I submitted a letter so the board could see that he had received the accommodation for going above and beyond.
That's great.
All right. Should we make a motion to formally recognize Justin Higgins for a certificate of excellence or something like that?
You have support? It sounds like a motion to me.
Sure, I'll support it.
Yeah. Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Anyone pose? Okay, motion passes, thank you, chief. Okay, we have a resolution, a conveyance of bottom lands, and we get these, basically someone's buying the bottom land back from the state, so they own it themselves, and before the DNR will do that, we have to have pass a resolution allowing them to do this.
So purchase as opposed to the lease?
Yes, they buy the lease out. How many more of these we got going on?
This is not actually a lease.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Bottom land, it's different.
Yes.
So this is just part of their application, that they have to have this, so...
Okay, they are buying bottom lands, not the lease, okay. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2024-13 for conveyance of bottom lands.
Okay, motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Chris O'Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes, John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Maureen Bory.
Yes.
Mark Burchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Chris O'Regan.
Motion passes. Next we have a discussion on starting a community garden. On behalf of, I have a person I know in the township, he's a botanist and horticulturalist from my alma mater, Michigan State, and he contacted me about starting a community garden, and I said, well, let's see if there's interest. So I've put a social media post out, and we talked, I was, you know, you're gonna need at least six core people that are very, very committed, and my, my, my hope was they would just take it and take the ball and run with it, run the whole thing. Well, in two and a half days, I have, in our township, this gal that is on the board of the Urban Seed, which is a huge community garden and park in East Point, I have a well-known farmer, I should say, up in East China, wants to be very involved, I have another guy who is a SC4 teacher, and he's a master gardener, he wants to be involved. I had countless other people that said, hey, I want, I'll donate dirt, I'll, I'll go and till, till what needs to be tilled, I'll do this, I'll do that. So I think there's makings of making this happen, and we were looking at location, and we do have the nine acres just on the west side of the bowling alley, and kind of walked it this morning, I think the best location on that would be the corner by M29 and Danny's, it's drier, it'd be more conducive for doing things, and just to start out, we're kind of envisioning making a couple 50 by 50 places, foot places to plant, and he said maybe some raised flower, or raised planters, so, because he said older people sometime have a, can weed these...
Bend over?
Yeah, exactly, and, I mean, this guy's very knowledgeable, both of them that I talked to, and try to get something going, and discussion, I thought, you know, what's the downside? Okay, it fails and we grow some weeds, well, we're growing weeds there right now, but I think the upside is, it could morph into something really, really nice, that would attract people in the area. If it did take off, we could be growing garden, you know, we could have a place for doing plant swaps, it could actually become a mini Eastern market, and I turned on the news this morning, actually, on Channel 4, and they were doing a big segment all day of this community, this urban garden in Highland Park, you know, it was a vacant place, Jacobi Park, Avalon, yeah, and I'm thinking, oh, if this isn't a signal, I don't know what is, you know, but they have a wonderful little area, and they really expanded it to something way cool, they have containers there that they gingerbread out, shipping containers, that they, they put up little business incubators, or someone wanted to come in and do something with, for a business, but they did there, there is a house next door, and they call it the homework house, where kids can go in there, be, be safe, and study, play, whatever, and they have a recording studio up above it, and it's, and a lot of people go there for homeschooling, and that, well, that's what they did there, and, but potentially it could morph into something kind of, kind of special, and we're not really doing a whole lot with it now, and I was talking to a couple, and I said, you know, if we can, it doesn't really have to be paved, we'll, we'll make a place, a couple places you can plant some stuff, a little area to park, I'm not saying paved, just cut it down and make sure it's hard, and they can park and get from the road in. I'd like to put a, some sort of a shed there, and run some electricity, and eventually water. Lance said temporarily we could hook, there's a fire hydrant right there, that they could hook to to get water for gardening, is that right, Lance? And, you know, it's township property, so before we do this, it needs the board's permission, and we do have about 40,000 left in our ARPAM money, I, myself, I wouldn't be opposed to throw five grand at, of ARPAM money at this. We could get the DDA as a funding source, too.
I think that'd be a great project for the DDA.
Yeah, either one, it definitely bring, it falls right in line with DDA things. I was talking to someone about it, and actually in New Baltimore, and they said, my God, if you had some kind of a little market there and stuff, it was, I envision people from McComb County jumping their car, you know, they wanna go for a drive, where are they gonna go? They're gonna drive to the water, stop here, and look around, do whatever, and go to a restaurant, and that type of thing.
Is that gentleman that used to have a produce by Kay's, did he come out last summer?
No. I...
I just wouldn't want to take anything away from him.
No, I know, no, I understand that, or if he wanted to park there, he could, and if it did take off, you know, it's all gonna hinge on volunteers, I mean, everyone, you know, will show up to plant it, you know, it's gonna take volunteers to weed it and maintain it, and that's what it's gonna hinge on, like I say, it could be, it could fail, and we get a bunch of weeds, but I think we have a huge up, potential for a huge upside. And we have, right now, we have people that are willing to volunteer for it, I got, like I said, I got a guy that'll give me, or give, give dirt, I gotta, have a guy till, have a guy that's gonna donate fencing and borders for if we do the raised garden, lumberjack will kick in for some lumber.
We'll need to check with John Johnson for liability.
Yes.
If you're gonna be doing that, having machinery over there, just as volunteers.
All of this sounds great, and I'm totally in favor of it, however, once we push the button to proceed, we should, who's gonna be responsible for developing the site plan, so we're in compliance with the ordinance is, Clay Township doesn't want to be in violation of ordinances, believe me.
Well, it would be their responsibility, the group.
It's our property, though.
But it's gonna be a site plan, yeah, so we're still gonna need a site plan, right?
Yeah, I don't have...
We're gonna need a culvert, we're gonna need crushed brick and block, I mean, that's, that's the first step, right? We gotta put a culvert in there.
The acceleration zone coming in, parking lot.
Access to a parking lot. So that's, you know, that's five grand.
Yeah, I can have project control work something up on that, easy enough.
That's 10 grand.
Yeah, I mean, we already have two projects that aren't completed, the Pearl Beach project is not operational, the kayak launch is not operational, I mean, this is a great idea, don't get me wrong, but there, I can see easily 25 grand going into it.
Eventually.
Well, I mean...
Let's see if it works first.
We're supposed to have an opportunity, I'm reading right from the MTA, to trustees should be given an opportunity to investigate and study decisions before voting. We have no names or anything of these people that you speak of who are interested, I'd like to speak to them personally, I'd like to talk to Danny's, because this is gonna, people are probably going to park in his parking lot, see if he's opposed to it, I mean, don't give me that look, we need to talk to Danny's, I mean, it's, I think that's important, it's gonna be at his corner.
Sales will probably go up.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, if they're gonna drink beer and operate machinery, I got a problem with that.
I don't know if the hoe is a machinery, but anyways.
And the liability, like you say, is an issue, the parking is an issue, I mean, we have to buy the shed, we have to get electricity, I mean, it's, it's, it's a project, and by the time we get every...
10 grand?
Yeah. Doing a exploratory feasibility, and see if we can do this.
Well, maybe supply the information, so that I can contact people and make a decision, and we can decide at the board meeting, or the budget meeting, or the next meeting on the 17th, but I believe that I have a right to, you know...
I love the idea of a Clay Township Farmer's Market.
Don't be in the motion yet, did they?
That'd be great.
There's been no motion. Yeah, we don't have a motion yet.
No, you started, Maureen, I'm sorry, you started your conversation by stating something, can you read that back? What was the first sentence you read?
Let me find it again.
At the board...
Trustees should be given an opportunity to investigate and study decisions before voting, so, I mean, I don't want to vote on it today, that's all I'm saying, it's a great, but...
See how it starts? It says discussion of a community vote.
Discussion.
It didn't say anything about voting.
Okay.
We're just talking, so you can, yeah.
I just don't want to start another project...
I don't want to vote on it today either.
Without knowing all the plans again.
I think you outlined a pretty good scope of work for that council, and if the parking was big enough, we can probably utilize that parking when the new park opens down there with water.
Yeah.
We'll have to continue to maintain it, you gotta cut, cut everything down for people to park there, and they'll have to continue to cut it, and mark it off, and...
So, can we say we have permission to go forward with a community garden in that location, and to seek out a layout?
So that is a vote, I don't want to give permission till I can do the research.
Are you putting, supervisor, are you putting a, a expense number with your motion? Are you asking to proceed with planning?
I would like to do exploratory on using that property for a community garden, and give them permission to do the exploratory on that garden.
Give who permission?
Give the group.
Well, I think we need to make sure what our liability is on it first.
Yes, I do too.
So I can, I can get that from John tomorrow, I'm sure, and...
Yeah, providing we have our insurance coverage, I believe it will be covered, because it's gonna be vacant property now, it's vacant property afterwards, they, you know, they build that into everything.
Well, I would make, I would make a move, not a, not a motion, but to move the discussion to the next board meeting, with pending the findings on what the secretary has, and then if anybody else finds anything during that time, and keep that ball going.
And that group can still discuss what they see for that piece of property, and then maybe they could come back and present it.
I'd like to talk to the group, I don't know who these people are, so, I'd like to have a way to speak with them and see their commitment level, and...
Well, these are people that worked out, that reached out to you, right?
Yes, they all reached out to me. One of them lives on Fruit Road, and he grows everything for his own family, and he actually has a spice business, he makes spices on everything that he grows, he's very committed.
Is that the Board of Urban Seed?
No, there is another gal that's on the Board of, of the Urban Seed.
And there's a farmer from Chi, East China.
Yeah.
I'd like to just talk to all of these folks, talk to Danny's, make sure he's not gonna be opposed to it.
Did that sell yet?
No.
And if, and if nothing else, we can open that piece of property up, and do what Elginac does, what Marine City does, and have a farmer's market there during the summertime, on whatever week, day of the week we decide, I think that's, that would be great, to bring people in, and highlight the township.
Can we have the water department start prepping that area? Because, I know Lance...
Does he have the time, and how much is it gonna cost us?
Because they're gonna want to try to get a summer planting and a fall planting, it just, I mean, it needs to be cut anyhow.
What do they need for prep, Artie?
Uh, I would say just cut it hard, and, and I'll have them stake it out, what, where they see, you know, what, what will be tilled for planting, and we'll have an area for parking cars, you know, I'm talking three, four cars, not a, you know, we're not gonna have a rock concert back there. I know, yeah.
Well, you're gonna have a lot more probably than three or four people there, if you have a farmer's market and different things, so...
Right, but we're just talking about planting a garden right now, it's gotta start somewhere, and hopefully it will sprout.
Well, but the problem is, Artie, you know, we start these...
There's nine acres there, isn't there? How many acres are there?
About nine, 10.
Yeah, so it's not that we wouldn't have room to clear more for parking.
Exactly.
We start these projects without knowing everything that we're gonna do, and that's a problem.
Well, let's put a cap on the amount.
Well, we don't have an amount.
We don't have an amount, yeah.
We need to look into liability and...
Yeah, we gotta look at liability first.
Do some homework, but he just wanted to make sure that nobody was strictly opposed to the idea, that's all.
Right.
I love the idea, I, I think it's cool.
I do too.
I think this could be done right.
You know, instead of saying why no join this, you know, I always say why not, and I don't see any why, too many why nots. Liability could be an issue, we'll check into that.
A little bit behind the curve for timing.
For this year.
But we can start small.
Yep, and that's what we're gonna do, and in fact, I talked to the farmer, and he goes, you know, you're better off doing small little cluster gardens, and, and plant them, you know, you might want to do asparagus here, and that will just take off, you won't have to even mess with that, and, you know, different things, corn here, this, that, this, that, and as it goes, we can, we can also, you know, do, do more sections, you know, we're talking 50 foot by 50 foot, a guy will come in and have a skidster and just do it, so...
I think we have enough interest that you can move forward with doing some more exploratory investigations, and come up with some costs and see what we gotta do.
I'm good with that.
And I'll look at the liability side.
Can you supply numbers and emails of the interested parties that you've talked to, can you ask them if, if it's okay if we call and talk to them?
I can.
I don't know what to ask them.
Yeah.
Well, I know what to ask them, my question's my own.
I'd be more interested in mosquito repellent plants.
Right.
Mummin grass.
There's no use for us to spend all this money if they're not committed to do it, because we're not gonna do it, and I want to make sure the water department isn't gonna have to work overtime to do this, and we're gonna have to spend more money, you know, they gotta have the time.
Well, he's out there cutting the lawn anyways, you might as well take a couple of swipes in the field, it's not a big deal.
The risk isn't that much in my mind, but the upside is potentially pretty cool, if you have a vision, what it could come into, could morph into.
I agree, I mean, I love the idea, I love gardening myself.
Good, you can help.
I'll present you with the golden...
I have, I have my plate full, thank you.
I'll have them proceed, I'll try to put the group together more formally, and see if they can draw up a few plans, and take it from there. Sound good?
Sounds good.
Okay. All right.
I'd like the contact information, that's all.
All right, let's see, move on to board member comments. Cindy, you have anything?
I just want to say congratulations to Justin Higgins, that was a nice write-up that he got, I'm sure the certificate that he got was even nicer, and I sure hope they spelled his name right. And don't forget the first ever Harrison's Island... his name right. And don't forget the first ever Harrison's Island Road Rally fundraiser on June 8th at 9:20 a.m.
Perfect.
Right in front of San Souci.
Yep.
Go a little early if you want breakfast, at additional cost, of course.
That's right. All right, Mark?
All right, Planning Commission update. We had two site plans. One was approved, and that was on Pearl Beach Boulevard, marine construction. The other one was not approved, and that was the, on Mill Street, the commercial pole barn. That was not approved. The next meeting is June 6th, I believe. I didn't see an agenda yet, but that'll be forthcoming. And I understand that our supervisor will be addressing the Elginac Lions Club this Wednesday. Of course, you all know that the Elginac Lions Club is actually in Clay Township, so.
We have three.
We have three.
We're the only municipality in this, probably the country, that has three lions.
Please, if you'd like to be on the board or whatever, would like to attend that meeting, please let me know. We're having five or two ribs, and-
Oh, are we?
And the corn on the cob.
I know that, that's a win.
That Planning Commission meeting is the 26th.
Yeah, the 26th.
What, 20, what'd I say, the 6th?
Yeah.
26.
If any of you are in, so.
All right, sounds good.
Don't come on the 6th.
Yeah. Thanks, Mark.
The budget meeting, June 13th, from 2 to 4. You didn't want to talk about it earlier, so I just wanted to bring it up now. I'd like to see if that's a possibility to tape it. So if you could let me know, because I think that's the most important thing that people want to know. How are we spending their money? Where is it going? That should be taped above and beyond any other meeting. You mentioned the algae plant in your supervisor report.
The what plant?
Your supervisor, the algae water treatment plant on Harrison's Island. And I know we've moved forward with a lot of it, but we still need another 2.25 million.
We have it.
We've got 2 million, right?
No, we have 4.25 million.
They already committed to it?
Yes.
All right, I didn't get that correspondence, I missed it. All right, that's awesome. And I guess, I guess that's it. There was one more thing. I just want to make sure I get the information on the garden, because I don't want, I'm concerned about the other projects still not up to snuff. I don't want to have that happen a third time, so. I'll look forward to that.
Third time, okay, thank you. John?
So congratulations again to our boys varsity baseball, girls softball team, district champions. Good luck at regionals.
Yeah, when's the regionals? Have you?
Um, June.
I got some dates.
Chris is gonna update.
All right.
Also, you mentioned it, Artie, there's, there's quite a number of track, boys and girls that made it to states, state finals. So congrats to those, that's quite an accomplishment. And go Muskrats.
That's right. Sounds good. Chris, you got dates for us?
I do, I do. Yeah, so baseball, you know, Coach Scott Thaler has got the boys playing again on June 5th, two days from now, at 4:30. And they'll be at Madison Heights playing Bishop Foley. And the girls-
I thought that was a home game.
What's that?
I thought that was a home game.
Oh, well, unless I have it backwards. I've got the girls playing at home on June 8th versus Wixom St. Catherine. That's Coach Natalie Heim, unless I have them, unless I have them reversed.
I think it might.
I might. You can find this information on the MHSAA website. All you have to do is look for District Play. We're in District Pre.
Yeah, the girls are on the 5th.
Muskrats will play Bishop Foley High School on Wednesday, the 5th, in the regional semifinal game, 4:30 in the Swamp.
In the Swamp?
In the Swamp.
All right.
Fantastic. MHSAA had that wrong. I apologize. And that was the girls?
That was, no, that was the boys.
That's the boys.
Yep. I don't see anything about when they play.
Girls are the 5th at Utica Ford.
I may be a little late for that dinner.
Baseball game.
I'll save you one rib.
Yeah, 4:30.
He won't, Mark.
Huh?
He won't save you a rib.
That's gonna be a great game.
Yeah, and good luck on the SSI Road Rally this weekend. I hope it goes really well. Hope everybody's safe and having a lot of fun. Yeah, I hope so.
It's gonna be nice.
That's all good.
Yeah, Kristy?
I want to say congratulations to the class of 2024 that I believe is graduating this week. I know the juniors and seniors were celebrating prom tonight, so it's an exciting time of year. Everybody be safe driving out there.
Good call. Wow, time goes by fast.
Sunday night prom, that's cool.
All right, well, thanks for everybody coming. Justin Higgins, kudos. And the road rally, hope everything's good, and, and good weather. Do you need anything from us for that?
I don't need some.
Yeah, I think, I know they talked to them. And I'm, I'm looking forward to getting that ball rolling on the sign. And man, our baseball, men and women, they're, they've been, they've been doing great. I went to, what was the games? The first one in regionals. And, I mean, they're solid. They are solid. And I'm sure the, the women are, too. So it's, I love seeing our Muskrats do well in sports. It, it's a good, it's a good thing, so. Other than that, everyone have a great day. I'll take another motion.
Motion to adjourn?
Yeah. So moved. All in favor. Thanks for coming, everybody.